Good morning, everybody. This is Gil Sidiyo. We are going to start this special meeting of the Housing Committee here on April 7, 2014, here in the Council chambers. I ask everyone to be patient with us. This is obviously our first time doing this, and then in addition to this, there's a whole series of little nuanced challenges that were left for us, and all of us have to work together patiently to get through this. My notes tell me that the first thing we're going to do is bring up, as we work on the sound, the first thing we're going to do is bring up the CLA to the table and have them report on the following: challenges of the 40th program year, programs that have not been funded through CDBG, and programs in CDBG that will see a reduction in funding. Okay?
Mr. Chair Clay McCarter from the CLA, I can read item one into the record if you'd like.
Yes.
Item one is a report from the CLA relative to the budget for the 40th program year, the Housing and Community Development Consolidated Plan.
Can we get, so it's item one, and we'll do public comment on item one first? Yeah. Can we get public comment on item one first? Is that okay? Sorry. There you go. Public comment on item one, can I have Mike Arnold come up? And after Mike Arnold, Pat Butler? And after that Nancy Volper.
Good morning, committee. I'm Mike Arnold. I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. I do want to call out, I realize I only have a minute, so I'm going to speak very quickly.
A little closer to the microphone, please.
What's that?
Speak a little, okay.
I just want to call out that I'm very concerned about some changes that are being proposed, particularly to the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Item number 26 on Attachment A was listed as Council District 14. It should be identified as Citywide. This is the LASSA Emergency Response Team. This is the team that does outreach in all of your districts, including Hanson Dam, the Silmar, Sunland, Topanga area, North Hollywood Park, MacArthur Park, Pershing Square, Grand Park, Lemurk Park, Union Station. A reduction of 30% of that funding would be devastating to that and would significantly reduce our ability to be responsive. Reducing shelter beds under the Emergency Solutions Grant may have an unintended consequence of forever losing that money to be used for shelter beds because we're currently grandfathered in. So there are some significant, unanticipated, and I think misunderstood aspects of that that I wish the committee would consider.
Thank you. Pat Butler?
Hello. I'm Pat Butler, Director of Sojourn Services for Battered Women and Their Children, a project of OPCC. The bottom line, of course, as you know, is that our clients are predominantly women and children who had to leave what would have been adequate housing for the simple reason that someone was trying to kill them there. And I'm here simply to thank you for the hard work that you're doing, looking out for them, and making sure that we continue to be funded to provide the services.
Nancy, come on up. And after Nancy, Debbie Nelson. And then Ajahn Lamar.
Thanks. Good morning. I'm Nancy Volper. I'm the Director of Public Policy for Jewish Family Service of Los Angeles, celebrating our 160th anniversary as a nonprofit here in LA. We are providing services to individuals in need, seniors, low-income families, and survivors of domestic violence. And I join Pat and my colleagues in thanking you for your innovative approach to trying to restore at least a significant chunk of the funding for DVDSO. And we are hopeful that with what you've put in through CDBG, as well as the general fund allocation, that we will at least minimize the harm to our clients who are at risk of homelessness and violence. And so we thank you for that and hope you will not make any further cuts.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Debbie Nelson, and I'm a Senior Director at 1736 Family Crisis Center. I also want to start by thanking the committee for the consideration of funding the domestic violence shelter operations with both the Mayor's 40th Year Consolidated Plan and funding in the 1415 City Budget. We also very much appreciate your efforts. However, we also want to mention that with both of these sources, we're still not being funded to the previous amount as last year and will suffer a cut. And want you to consider the fact that any funding cuts at all represents dangers to victims of domestic violence. We have to remember that domestic violence funding has been consistently cut over the years, and we respectfully request that you continue to prioritize these life-saving programs and identify consistent, reliable funding to ensure their continuation in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Adrianne Lamar, and I'm the Operations Officer with Genesee Center. I have along with me our staff members, our Finance Director, and our Family Services Director. I did not prepare a formal written statement, but I did want to address the special meeting and the council to let you all know that we are appreciative of the continued funding for Genesee Center on behalf of victims of domestic violence. As echoed from 1736 and other domestic violence shelter programs, cuts are always devastating, and we know the devastating effect that they have on families who are reeling from the effects of domestic violence. So thank you again for the consideration for continued funding for the program.
Thank you. Deborah Sil. And after Deborah, Sarah Burdine.
Good morning. I'm Deborah Sal from Center for the Pacific Asian Family. We support survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault in 30 Asian and Pacific Islander languages. And I'm here to thank you for taking a second look, for opening up for public feedback, and making difficult decisions. It's never easy to make those hard funding decisions, but we thank you for continuing to fund for domestic violence survivors services. And it is with a heavy heart that I thank you because there are those programs that there are other programs that were not funded. So we hope that we can work together to build a stronger Los Angeles where we see those who are the most vulnerable continuing to be served. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, sirs. I'm Sarah Burdine. I'm the Executive Director of Haven Hills. I want to echo everything that you've heard from the other programs that we work collective and collaboratively with to serve victims of domestic violence. Haven Hills has been doing that for 37 years, and we've saved countless lives, and we've had many families get back on the road to self-sufficiency without having that violence in their lives. And having to say thank you, I know how hard that you have really worked, and I appreciate that work, and I appreciate that you understand the need for domestic violence safety net services and shelter. And having said that, please, I'd like to invite you to work with the Domestic Violence Task Force. I'm the co-chair of the Funding Committee, to look at future ways to continue to bring the level of funding back instead of continual cutting. But I do appreciate the fact that you are preserving the funds that we have and keeping us in the plans. Thank you.
Yes. Don Casey Lovelace?
I'm with St. Barnabas Senior Services in Los Angeles, and I am also the Civic Engagement Coordinator for the Los Angeles Aging Advocacy Coalition. And I wanted to, first of all, thank Councilmen Wesson and Sidiyo and Martinez for your motion last week and considering appropriating funds to the committee, appropriating funds, committee funds to, for the EBP programs that have been at stake and in jeopardy. So we thank you for that motion and consideration, and we just ask that you continue to consider us, especially St. Barnabas and CD1, and that we are able to continue our programming for the next year or so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Please join us. You guys can come back?
Good morning. Andrea Galvin with the CLA's office. For the record, our office has just received contract authorities from the Housing Department for domestic violence programs, a revised Affordable Housing Trust Fund Technical Services Contract, and from the Department of Aging. These have been submitted as a revised Attachment G and new Attachments M and N to our report. To include these in our recommendations, Recommendation Number 14 of the CLA report should read Attachments E through N to reflect this change. In addition, Recommendation Number 17 should include the Economic Workforce Development Department to report on economic development fund guidelines along with the Housing Department. As you know, the Mayor's Office presented the proposed budget for the 40th Year Consolidated Plan, also known as the CON Plan, to this committee in February of this year. The CON Plan allocates funds through four federal grants over a 12-month period from April 1, 2014, through March 31, 2015. Four federal grants are Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Home Investment Partnership, also known as HOM, Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, also known as HOPWA. Subsequent to the release of the Mayor's proposed budget, which reported estimated entitlement amounts for each grant, the city was informed of its actual entitlement amounts for the year. The Program Year 40 CDBG entitlement amount of $51 million represents a 4% decrease from the previous year. However, the other three grant entitlements saw an increase from last year. HOM's entitlement of $21 million is an 11% increase, HOPWA's entitlement of $16 million is a 20% increase, and the ESG entitlement of $4.3 million is a 13% increase from last year. In considering total resources available for allocation, including entitlement amount, program income, and prior-year savings, CDBG resources available for this year total $75.5 million. And when including the other three grants of HOM, ESG, and HOPWA, total available resources for the 40th CON Plan year are approximately $130.6 million. City staff across several departments are dedicated to administer these funds. Because there are federal regulations as to how much of the grant can be spent on administrative costs, while the CON Plan normally covers direct salaries, there is often an impact to the general fund, which covers the indirect or related costs of employees, such as pensions, health benefits, and other various costs to employee staff member. A total of $5.9 million in related costs are assumed in this year's CON Plan. Of this $5.9 million, approximately $5.1 million is proposed to be reimbursed from CDBG funds to the general fund for related costs. Therefore, in our recommendations, the general fund impact of the budget presented before you today is $829,000. For reference, last year's general fund impact was estimated at approximately $2.9 million when the CON Plan budget was adopted in March of 2013. Clay McCarter of our office is here to discuss CDBG prior-year savings and various challenges we faced with this year's CON Plan budget.
Thank you, Clay McCarter. Good afternoon. One of the major challenges that we faced with this year's CON Plan was the decision by HUD to disallow the city's use of the Community-Based Development Organization, or CBDO category, which used to fund approximately $18.7 million of public services, which were not counted towards the 15% public service cap. Now, the Mayor proposed removing the Department of Aging, the Department of Disability, from the CON Plan, and recommended funding these departments with other sources in the city budget. We recommend restoring these programs in the CON Plan and restoring most of the funding dedicated to AIDS services. In order to fit these programs under the public service cap, we recommend split-funding the AIDS program, domestic violence, and a specific LASSA line item between CON Plan resources and other resources to be identified in the city's FY 1415 budget. For the programs not funded by the CON Plan, a motion was introduced by Councilmembers Sidiyo and Wesson, which proposes three-month funding to fund these programs from April 1 until June 30, and the programs will then be considered as part of the 1415 budget. In order to free up further CON Plan resources, we utilized an increase in our ESG allocation to increase ESG funding in a specific line item and reduce the same amount in CDBG dollars. We will meet with LASSA to review the impacts of this swap and look for ways to preserve bed spaces. Finally, we examined each program funded by CDBG in prior years and identified $2.3 million in additional savings that we have allocated in the 40th Year Budget. And with that, we'll be happy to take your questions.
Alex? I have amendments that I want to read into the record for the report. Line item 70, the ED Model Implementation. These are a series of decreases. We're going to decrease by 189, 224. Line item 78, AHF Delivery, we're going to decrease by 306, 464. Line item 92, a decrease of 9,108. Line item 93, City Attorney TARP, 272, 848. Line item 97, Neighborhood Facility Improvements, $75,000. And line item 96, Code Enforcement, $100,000, for a net of $952, 644. Conversely, we're going to add line item 89, Single Family Rehab, $146, 480. Line item 105, the Central Avenue Facade Improvements, $100,000. Line item 129, Sun Valley Street Lighting, $100,000. And line item 134, LA Theater, $7,000. New, we have BSS LH Bus Bench, $50,000. And new CD1 Street Improvements, $149, 164. And finally, we have new PUCOMA CH Tenant Improvements, $500,000. And that nets us an add of $952, 644. Finally, we will change on line item 132, we'll go from park restroom construction to Silmar Community Park improvements, and change 133 Sepulveda Midian to the Foothill Midian. Those are the amendments. Motion, second? and so we will note that and then move forward. Mr. Wesson would be joining us later so that we can move the item. Okay. Correction, Mr. Wesson will not be joining us, and this will be a communication to the full council as we take this forward. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's go to item two.
Item number two is a HCID and CAO reports regarding the neighborhood improvement, regarding the Neighborhood Improvement Fund Call for Projects.
Can I get Housing to come up?
This is a request from the Housing Community Investment Department to release Neighborhood Improvement Fund Call for Projects. The NAF is intended to provide gap financing for capital projects linked to citywide and community strategies. Funding is provided through Community Development Block Grant, and HCID recommends award amounts in the range of $100,000 to $250,000 per project, subject to review and approval by the Mayor and the Council. Specifically, the NAF application and reviewing procedures were designed to align with the Mayor's Great Streets Initiative, Consolidated Plan Goals, and other place-based strategies. Nonprofit organizations, for-profit organizations, and city departments are eligible to submit applications for project funding through the NIF. The HCID is targeting a release of Call for Projects in April 2014, with applications due within 30 days, and they will then transmit recommendations to the Mayor and the Council for approval and anticipate dispersing project awards starting in September 2014.
Good morning. Good afternoon, I should say. Ed Gibson from Housing Community Investment. About a month or so back, we discussed the Neighborhood Improvement Fund with you here at Housing Committee, and listened to your comments and your input, and also listened to the community as well. This Neighborhood Improvement Fund, NIF, was designed to provide that gap financing that's needed to finish off projects in our community. It would have been the hope that we had a little bit more money, that perhaps we could have gone up to a little bit higher dollar amount, but in some communities, this is a considerable amount of money to get those projects done for our constituents. At this particular moment, there's about $2.7 million in the account. The other balance has been encumbered for other type of projects, needed inside the city budget, of course. But with this, we hope to provide a model of how we can start moving projects forward and ensuring that they get implemented timely and quickly and meeting our city goals along the way, particularly for those groups who have a strategy moving forward. This will help them plug those gaps and get those projects moving so we can see them done more timely.
All right. We, if you need any questions?
Hope you need any questions?
Nope. Questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to hold that item. Continue it. Right, so we're going to instruct the CLA to report back on the program in 30 days, and we're going to continue the item for 30 days.
Item three is a Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles report regarding a payment in lieu of taxes waiver, or $2.1 million.
So, before we go forward, my staff tells me that, for those who aren't clear, we did approve the whole plan, and so that'll go to council tomorrow. So we'll be in council tomorrow on this. So I appreciate your visit, but if you have other matters, I won't be offended. And we thank you, guys. Finally, item number three, we have the Housing Authority, no, Housing Authority of the City of LA, to report regarding a payment in lieu of taxes waiver of $2.1 million. Can we bring Hackla up to give their report? Gentlemen, good to see you again. Please join us.
Good morning, council members. My name is Sanford Riggs. I'm the Housing Services Director with the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles. What we are seeking is a waiver for a pilot obligation to the city. The pilot obligation is done by agreement with the city, a longstanding agreement. The Housing Authority being a government agency does not pay property taxes and does not pay taxes to the city, but by agreement, we've paid this pilot, these pilot funds to the city traditionally for services. Over the past several years, we've obtained waivers. HUD requires us to obtain a city council waiver before we use these funds for other services and other sources in the city. Our proposal is to spend $1 million of the $2.1 pilot funds for the summer youth jobs in our public housing developments, and $1.1 million to grid, gang reduction and youth development. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Yes. So help me understand, I don't understand how the mechanics of the program work. So it's a pilot payment. So does Hackla set aside what is anticipated to be the sort of equivalent number of, or rather, the equivalent amount of property taxes? Is that what you all do?
It's formula-based, council member. It is based on 2% of our rental revenue less utility costs on an annual basis, and it's calculated in that fashion. And it's set aside in a fund, and we can't use it for other purposes unless we get a city council waiver.
And so do you, so is that set aside according to your formula for every Hackla property?
Yes.
And so when you make sort of the decisions on how you're going to expend it, like in this case, for example, it's very worthwhile, you're aiming the funds for a certain part of Los Angeles or different parts of Los Angeles. How do you sort of decide programmatically what it is that you're going to spend the money on in future years? For example, I've got the San Fernando Gardens in my district. What type of benefit would I see from a future pilot program, rather, future pilot payment, for example?
You'd see the benefit of, for example, the Summer Youth Program. We, it'll fund approximately 600 slots for summer youth children, summer youth kids, and it is done proportionally by the amount of young people in that development. That's the way it's allocated.
And so, for example, this one here, you're requesting to use the $2.1 million for the Watts Regional Grid Program. Is there an allocation that's going to be earmarked for the grid program that serves the San Fernando Valley?
No.
Okay. So how do I get in the queue for future consideration from you all for that grid part of the, I guess I'm just trying to understand how the decision, you know, I know that this is what's on the rails for this year, and it's absolutely worthwhile, but in future years, when you come back and ask for a waiver, how do I get in line here to get some of the grid programming for the San Fernando Valley?
Well, I think the, first of all, my name is Eric Brown, the Housing Authority. As far as the grid program, I think you have to work closely with the Mayor's Office, these recommendations from the Mayor's Office. In the past, we have been funding the Watts Grid Program in the past two years, and this is our third of those two years that we're funding the grid program. We made a commitment two years ago to fund the Watts Grid Program.
So it was a commitment for a three-year sort of effort?
It was a two-year effort, and this is the third of the two-year effort.
Okay, so we're going one year above your two-year effort. And again, understand, you know, we want to have as much of an impact as possible, but when do we swing some of those resources next year? For example, how do you get in line for having some of this money? money serve other parts of Los Angeles? That would be eligible, obviously.
For the grid program?
Grid program. A million of it, you're also using it for... yeah, summer youth development is the grid part of it, but you also... you're earmarking a million of it for...
Summer youth... Jobs.
Yeah.
Which every council office is benefiting off of those.
Okay.
That million.
Of that million?
Yeah.
Okay. But the $2.1 million is going specifically to the Watts Regional Grid Program?
$1.1 million is going to the Watts Regional Grid Program.
Okay. And so just mechanically, again, how do I get in line?
I...
You mentioned you're working with the mayor's office?
Yeah, we're working closely with the mayor's office.
And they're the ones that are saying here, this is our recommendation?
They vouch us to continue to fund that program.
Very good. So if we want to get the San Fernando Gardens, which are in Pacoima, one of your HACLA properties, to get the summer grid program for the San Fernando Valley, mayor's office would be the place to start?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Very well.
Just one question. How's this... how's this work with the mayor's... he's taken a lot of initiative with the private sector. How does this work with the mayor's summer jobs program? Are these going to be integrated? Are these just standalones?
Councilmember, this is a... this is complementary to the mayor's program. We traditionally seek funding from the mayor's office as well. So potentially, we could get some additional slots from the city for the summer youth program. We run the pilot... the pilot-funded programs, but it is complementary. And any additional slots that we receive, we would add those to the mix and proportionally distribute them.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Give us an idea of the kinds of jobs that youth will be receiving on this program, or is it kind of...
Councilmember, we do a mix. We do a mix of two things. We have up to 400... 400 different businesses and government entities that we can rely upon to place young people at the place of business. It could be a library. We've even placed young people at the controller's office.
Just depends, how many hours are they going to be working? How much can they earn?
They earn up to $9 an hour, and up to between 110 hours and 120 hours of employment over the summer. And additionally, they... we will have some of the young people on-site at HACLA properties, either helping in the office or with the maintenance staff and on the ground. So it's really a mix of between private and public entities that take the young people for jobs and HACLA employment as well.
Thank you. So we're going to ask the CAO to issue a report on HACLA's recommendations, and we're going to approve and send this to Budget and Planets.
Mr. Chair, that concludes the agenda.
Thank you very much. That concludes the agenda. Thank all of you for attending, and we look forward to seeing you tomorrow at the council chambers.